Welcome to the Southwest for December fourteenth. Ten oh five and they're opening up. First item of business, are there any public comments?
Here we are.
None. Seeing none. I see no public comments. So.
Yes.
We'll move on.
There's a gentleman.
I apologize, I missed that. I had to reply to a text message from my mother. I apologize. I would like to leave one public comment.
Well, go ahead.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here with you all this morning. Um, I would like to say just one or two things. First of all, I'm very eager to hear about services that this board is working on for those with disability of various types. That the Southwest Technical School does a lot of really wonderful things, and I'm just eager to hear about services that are provided for disabilities and any other, you know, initiatives that might be in the works to better expand and reach out to those sorts of folks. The only other thing I have to say is on the accountability issue. You know, it maybe I could, uh, someone could jog my memory here, but the last meeting I attended, uh, I learned that there's a stipend for all board members. Maybe that's true. Maybe someone could jog my memory on that and just if there are stipends for board members, does that go to all of them or only those who attend meetings? And that's all I have to say, and I look forward to hearing about service. Thank you so much.
It goes to all of them. It's a thing that's voted on at the floor meeting once a year. And at present time, it's $1,000 per member.
I'm sorry, how much? I apologize.
It's voted on at the floor meeting and at the present time, it's $1,000 per year.
Per member or for all of them?
Per member for the year.
Could I inject something?
You're muted.
You're muted, Leon.
This.
There.
Just wanted to remind everybody and public comments ought to be heard and is left up to the chair to actually incorporate a question or comment to whatever is made during a public comment. And there is not to be any back and forth communication in terms of between board members at the time of public comment. Okay? So everybody understand what the, what our open, I mean, the policy is that we have for that. I just want to remind everybody that.
Does that include simple questions, Leon, or researchable questions?
That's the chair is to take and hear the person and said, I'll refer to that later in the meeting when we come to that part on if it's something that's not on the agenda. He can put that in later if we have time. If not, you put it on the board on gender for the next time. Regardless of how simple it is. That's Fran.
I agree with you, Leon.
Okay.
Thank you. Leon. Yep. Are there any other public comments? At this time, I'd like to go into executive session.
Okay, so I just want to, I will be moving the board members into a breakout room. And I have not done that before at the board meeting. So again, I apologize. I'm going to take a few minutes to do that. What will, what will happen is in this meeting will be any members of the public and CAT TV and any such as myself and any other members who will remain in this open meeting and only board members will go into executive session in a breakout room. When you're in executive session, there is a button that should allow you to leave the breakout room and return to the meeting. And if so, for example, Fran, what will happen is once some board members come back, I'll know you're done in your breakout room. I'll go in and get you out of there because you're on the phone and bring you back to the public meeting. So
Very good.
I'm going to move board members to the breakout room.
Before we go, John, you have to say why we're going into executive meet session.
We're going into an executive session to look into a matter of a board member, uh, whether or not he can represent his committee today.
Person.
Okay, so.
Motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Decisions made by the, by the committee, the chairperson has chosen to remove the chairperson of the finance committee and, and appoint a new chairperson, that person being Frank Kenny for this, for this meeting. Thank you. And now we'll go back to the regular agenda. So minutes from the full board meeting of November second.
Almost.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, payroll warrants. Ten seventeen, ten eighteen and ten twenty-one.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And vendor warrants, ten nineteen, ten twenty and ten twenty-two.
Don't move.
Second.
I have, I have a question. What were those three at the beginning of the warrants from Amazon that were we, were lost or missing or something like that? What happened? Those expensive items.
Those were items with, related to cameras for our video production. And they were also items connected to one of the grants that would be covering it. So we are working on the credits of the return, locating them. So.
They actually ended up missing? You never got them?
They ended up missing at that point, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes. And while we're, we're talking about the vendor warrants, I know Ken, you had a question before related to the phone bill. So just so you are aware, we did get a credit back to the point where the next month we didn't have to pay anything. So just we did follow up with that and that was what had happened. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rebecca, you want to talk about the cash flow sheets or anything?
We have to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we vote on the vendor warrants first? It's moved and seconded?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Cash flow? Any comments or questions about those?
No.
Committee reports. See, just is Mike, Mike's not here yet, is that right? Mike Munson?
Correct. He has not come into the waiting room yet.
Okay, so his, his, he's on that committee. He's the chair of the committee to review the bylaws if I remember correctly. Alright, so can we have Rebecca, would you give the give us the finance report on the on the budget discussions?
That's fine. I didn't know if Fran needs to lead into anything or is, am I able to start talking?
No, you're good. Rebecca, go ahead and start it right off.
Okay. What I'd like to do is just share my screen so that people can see some of the details. Okay. So are you seeing the timeline on your screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing, we're talking about the budget. I just kind of wanted to go over how we got to the budget that I'll be presenting to the full board. We started this, actually, we started just a little bit late. We started toward the end of November this year where teachers submitted their budget requests for FY twenty-two. And teachers recognized that we've been dealing with some tight financial issues because of COVID. So they were very cautious in their request. There were some items that were larger items. If you, I wouldn't necessarily say their full wish list, but some items that they feel at some point would be needed. But those are some of the items that we may have either eliminated or looked at alternate ways to fund. And then we met with the finance committee. We met on Thursday, December third. And we met via Zoom. We had a second meeting on Tuesday, December eighth. And in both those meetings, we discussed teacher requests, we discuss revenue sources and looked at what we needed to do to operate the school and to be able to do so without hurting any of the programs that we currently have in place. And that leads us to this meeting today. And after today's meeting, hopefully we will vote on a budget and a proposed announced tuition. From there, if there becomes an issue, we would have to have a special meeting. But I'm hoping that we will settle everything today. And then moving forward, what will happen is on Wednesday, by Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, I will have to have the warning at the town clerk's office. And I also have to announce tuition to all sending districts by January fifteenth. So that all schools that send students to the tech center are aware of our voted announced tuition. And then again, the warning is posted at the town clerk's office. And at this point, it is my understanding that nothing has changed with the town meeting. However, there have been some conversations about pushing back certain town floor meetings. I will definitely follow up with our town clerk in Bennington to see if anything is changing. But right now I'm planning that everything is going to be run the way it has been and the floor meeting date is still set for March first. Again, if that changes, I'll let the board know and certainly we'll make sure that we follow whatever warning process needs to be done at that point. By January thirty-first, we will announce the access to the annual report. March first is our town meeting, floor meeting day where the budget is presented at the floor meeting and then Tuesday, March second is the at-large voting date. So it's important, we're earlier than a lot of the SVSU, but a lot of the SUs or school districts, we have to have our budgets set first so that we can send out our announced tuition to the sending schools by January fifteenth, so they can incorporate them into their budgets. That being said, I want to shift to the budget presentation for FY twenty-two. Just kind of a review of what we do here at Southwest Tech. We have sixteen day programs that are two or three-year technical programs. And you can see from the list accounting, auto tech, building trades, right through video productions, graphic art designs. We have our manufacturing. All the programs are listed there and we also have a work-based learning seminar where the students also get a chance to normally go out and spend time in industry. With COVID, that's slightly different with what's happening for some of our students. But in a normal world, they would actually be out in industry, kind of seeing what their technical program is like. We have in the daytime programs, we also have some adult students that participate in our daytime programs, which is nice to see. And it might be some retraining for some. It might be, you know, a career change. We also have eight, eighteen daytime pre-tech foundation classes. These are sort of those intro classes into the technical programs. And you can see the list from anatomy of crime to personal finance to forensic science.
Becky, what is spike? That's the only one I don't know.
Spike is the pre-law is the, or law enforcement, I'm sorry. It's related to the law enforcement program and introduction into the law enforcement. We have six workforce foundation and certification courses. And I know that currently are, that Rob for our adult ed is looking at expanding different programs and courses that will be offered. And there might be some new programs offered coming shortly. But right now we have the CDL program, the licensed nursing assistant program, advanced manufacturing, emerging, emergency medical technician, pharmacy technician, veterinary assistant. We also have in addition to that, a variety of online seven hundred and twenty-two workforce and adult ed training classes in partnership with Ed2Go. So a lot of the online courses. And these are just a few of those that have been popular that are listed here. So I mean, we are, we are definitely expanding and growing and you'll see when we look at our FTE count that we certainly are doing some of the right things. And we are working with our community to provide kind of the retraining needed in the community. Some key factors in developing this year's FY twenty-two budget. There is again, a proposed increase in health insurance rates. And I say proposed because it still has not been finalized by the state, but this is what the insurance company has brought forth. It is a nine point eight percent increase in the rates for the FY twenty-two year. So again, usually when they bring these requests forward, they are approved. So for building the budget, I had to anticipate that that increase would be in place. We have teacher and ESP contracts up for renewal. So with negotiations going on, there may be some potential for some changes in the contract that I have to anticipate. There with the health insurance increases, including the rate increase that I talked on the first bullet, we are increased as far as responsibilities with HRA amounts. They have been increased when they did the state negotiations. And so the amount that we pay in the HRAs for the different tiers has increased. The plan tier options have opened up and are wider. So people can choose two-person or family plans where that might not have been an option for some of our members in the past. We've had an increase in people signing on with the health insurance. And one of the big impacts also is with the HRA, we are now as the employer, the first pay, which means starting January one of twenty twenty-two. If health insurance, if an employee that has taken on our health insurance has an expense, the HRA pays first and the employee pays second after which calculating all of these things together, not just one by itself, but all of these things together, it's a potentially a ninety-eight thousand dollar increase in our cost. We have the Vermont State Teacher Retirement Payment that we make for newer teachers. It is mandatory. And again, it's approximately a fourteen thousand dollar increase with new teachers coming on board each year. And they may not be new as far as teaching experience, but if they're new to Vermont and a new teacher in our system, then we make that payment. Then one of the things we had talked about for the past two years, there was a need for manufacturing fab computers in that lab. And we've been trying to keep them up and running. And if we finally make the improvements, it's about an eighteen thousand, two hundred dollar cost to fix that lab and upgrade it. So it can handle the software to keep up with current industry needs. And then in general, there are some technology upgrades and transportation upgrades with working remote or hybrid, which is what we're in right now. There's been some challenges. The demand on the technology is greater than it has been. And being able to do that and do it successfully, we may need to continue to make some upgrades to our aging technology. And we've done that and the board's been very supportive of the things we have done. And then the same thing with transportation. We currently are providing transportation to our students that need it to come to the, send it, to come to the tech center right now, especially because some of the sending schools are either closed. Their building is closed. They're not closed, but their building is closed. So we've been kind of on the road since we started the hybrid mode of bringing students to and from the tech center for those who don't drive or don't have another means of transportation. We can't rely on the busing that we normally have relied on when they would bring students to Mount Anthony next door. So the majority of our students that require transportation, we are using our fleet of buses and vans and any way that we can to get our students here so they can participate in the hybrid mode education and be on campus. So we're taking another look at our aging transportation as well. So these are all factors that, that came into play for the budget. To take a look, this is just through FY twenty-one. You can see that we've tried to maintain, you know, as much as possible a relatively flat budget. There's been very slight increases as needed. And you can see at the very end of the timeline is what I'll be proposing for FY twenty-two. But as you look, there's not a huge incline in any year as we go through from FY sixteen to the current request and FY twenty-two. Our proposed budget for FY twenty-two, you can see what FY twenty-one is in comparison. So in FY twenty-two, we are looking at a request of four million seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollars, which would result in an anticipated announced tuition of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. As far as a budget change, comparing FY twenty-one's budget to FY twenty-two, it would be a two point seven eight percent increase. Comparing the announced tuition, it would be a two point nine seven percent increase from last year. To kind of break that down a little bit more, what's involved in the budget is our six-month or six semester, sorry, not six-month, six semester rolling average. And this is our FTE count over the past years. And I want to point out especially right here. The FY right now, the fall, which is this semester that we're in right now, if fall twenty twenty, our FTE count has increased. And again, with COVID, it, it is certainly wonderful to see the numbers. And it's challenging at the same time because of the fact that with COVID, we're limited to the number of students that can be in a classroom. But we're certainly excited to see that increase. That tells us that we're doing something right. It tells us that the board is doing something right and supporting providing this technical education. And it certainly will impact our FTE count. But again, with a six-month or six semester average, our current estimated FTE count is one fifty-four point nine. But keep in mind, this semester, one seventy-three point nine five, which is fantastic. You can see it's definitely a trend where we're going in the right direction. That FTE count is incorporated into creating that budget. And when we announce the tuition, this announced tuition for FY twenty-two is a six hundred and forty-three dollar change from FY twenty-one. So it's an increase of six hundred and forty-three dollars. It's again, a two point nine seven percent increase. To kind of break that down to more of a reality of the, what happens, we announce our tuition. And if we, if you accept this, the announced tuition would be the twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. We would receive an on behalf payment, which would be nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars per FTE supplement assistance grant of thirty-five percent of that, which would be three thousand, seven hundred dollars per FTE, resulting in an estimated tuition for a Vermont student. And I do emphasize that's in the state of Vermont. Out-of-state students do not gain anything from the state support grant or the supplemental assistance. This is just for in-state students. The estimated tuition would be nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars per FTE. What that looks like for one student in our program all year, it would cost four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. That would be our local cost to send one student, the sending school to send one student to our program. Again, I think it's a pretty reasonable price for the full year of the tech program. And what I'm looking for with the board is to have a discussion and hopefully approve this budget and approve the announced tuition rate. And at this point, I'm bringing it back and to answer questions to the board.
Rebecca, should we have a motion in a second to present it to the folk, to adopt the budget presented to the full board?
Yes.
I'll make that motion if it needs to be.
I'll check it.
Now we can have questions or whatever.
Jackie, you are muted.
I have a question. Rebecca, you said that this was the tuition for a person for the whole year. Does a sending school reduce that amount if the student only comes a half year or a quarter?
Yes, yes. So they would, they would pay based on the number of minutes that a student attends the program. So that four thousand, seven hundred and five dollars is the cost if they take the full year program from September to June.
Thank you.
I just think it's, it's amazing that you were able to come up with a budget with a ten percent increase in health insurance, a ninety-eight thousand upfront teacher negotiation and come up with a two point seven nine increase. That's amazing. It really is. And increase in all the number of students in our classes as well. The demand has increased so much. And I mean, it should be a very easy sell budget to the public. They're getting a lot of good assets for the amount of money they're spending. I just wish the state could give more. And I would hope that Dane there, when he goes up to Montpelier, if they have any extra money anyways, he could have it sent to the career development centers throughout the state because everywhere I read, we need more CDL drivers, we need all the machinists, we need more carpenters. Because everywhere I read, we need more CDL drivers, we need all machinists, we need more carpenters and stuff like that. And that's what we teach at the school. If they could subsidize and all these individuals will lose their job, they could come in the evening or during the day, get a free tuition from the state paid for, and they could get a good skill and go out in the public and start working and pay a tax. That would be great for them and great for the state. So Dane, if you're listening, make sure that you remember that, please.
Thanks for the comment, Ken. I'm, I'm listening. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
John did to get the vote McDonald.
Yeah.
All right.
None at all.
Okay. So we have two questions, first of all, to, one to accept budget and that's been, that's been moved.
Yeah.
I believe.
Thank you.
And seconded. So all in favor of accepting the budget as presented, please say aye.
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 It sounds unanimous. And then to accept the announced tuition rate for the for the twenty nineteen, yeah, twenty twenty two budget.
I'll move it.
Back in it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Again, unanimous. All right. So see.
John.
Yes.
Could I say something? This is, since we're on the finance, there was a public comment question. And that's up to you to answer that question at this time, since we're doing finance, because that's something that
Okay.
Ken said he can easily answer somebody to be able to give the public comment response right now in this meeting. I, that's up to you.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that. Currently, board members are, there is a stipend for board members of, of one thousand dollars. That is approved for all board members. And that, that, that's, that's approved at the the open meeting, the day before the, the vote is the vote goes through. So it'll be March first this year for the open meeting. And, and there's been no increase in that. Anytime recently, that's, that stayed the same at a thousand dollars. So that, I hope that answers your question, Asher. And see. We need to look also at a time adjustment for, for board meetings. Is there been some couple of things moving, you know, discussion of whether we should keep it at ten in the morning, move it to, back to the time that was in the evening, when it was to encourage more public participation and so forth. So let's open up the discussion.
John Frank Kenny. Probably would be best to leave it the way it is right now, only for the simple reason we're going to be doing budgets for S V S U and MAU. There's going to be plenty, plus we're going to keep on the, the teachers want to keep the contract negotiations going on as far as wordings and stuff like that, even though we've gotten, you know, agreements on the other two. So anyway, it's just, just my opinion.
Okay.
I have.
Any other comments?
Yes, I do. Dane, Dane, how does this affect you?
Excuse me. Yes, logistically, the legislature is in session from Tuesday to Friday. So once that begins, that won't conflict with a Monday. I have, as part of my business, picked up a client with Bennington College. So they will have a 10 a.m. class starting in February. So I would think at that point, it might be better to move to an evening class. But for the near future, 10 a.m. is fine. Thank you for asking, Jackie.
Should we push, push this off until to reconsider it that the February, February meeting? Since there may be an effect on some of the, some of the attendance at that point. Are there any questions about that or any comments?
Either that, John. Either that or wait till the March meeting and you have reorganization, you can set your times then. I mean, you're not talking that far away, so.
Right. And we may have, we may have a little bit better view of what's going to
Right.
What's, what's going on as far as COVID and all those kinds of things and where we'll, where we'll be with regard to whether buildings are open and so, et cetera, so.
Right.
Yeah. All right, so let's, let's put that off then to the March reorganization meeting. If, if that's all right with everybody.
So are you going to keep it at 10 o'clock in the morning?
Through, through, but through the March reorganization.
Okay, thanks.
And to clarify, through Zoom as well at this point, correct?
Right, right. So we need, I like to move that motion to keep the, the, the full board meeting time on for Mondays at 10 o'clock for
I'll second it.
Three months.
Okay.
And Becky, the next meeting, the next meeting is January 11th, is that the next meeting?
Yes.
Schedule your setup, okay.
All right, so we've had a move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mike's superintendent's report. Is Meg going to present that?
I did not, I did not get a written report from Mike.
Okay.
I mean, I can talk a little bit about what's been going on here. We continue to see students here on a daily basis, besides Wednesday, of course. We continue to screen the students here. And it's, it's interesting to see because now they're in the routine of, of what questions get asked and, you know. And so, just so you're all aware, we, we sanitize their hands when they come in. We ask them questions about out of state travel, if they've been involved in multifamily gatherings within the last 14 days, as well as symptom check. And we've also been asking how they've gotten to school because sometimes students carpool. So if, if we are informed that a student has, has symptoms or has tested positive, then we have documentation around who they have come to school with. And, and all of this is, is, you know, for contact tracing purposes. We do document temperatures before students, you know, are, are sent to class. You know, we've been operating this way since, you know, the, the last few months. And, you know, knock on wood, everyone has stayed healthy. And it's, it's really a different vibe having students in the building. And, and I think the students are appreciative to be able to physically come in and go to class. As you know, many of our programs are very, have a lab component to them. And some are, are much more difficult to, to teach remotely than others. We also, just so you know, we also have a great team here. We've had various, you know, staff and faculty hop in to, to do jobs that we haven't done in the past, which I mentioned a few, like temperature check, you know, symptom check. But also every, every morning we get delivered breakfast and lunch for each student. Those are usually whisked away, brought down to the, the campus store. And we combine lunches and breakfasts and get them all set for delivery. And then at the end of the morning, typically go around the building and deliver those lunches to each classroom. So it certainly is, the day looks different here. But nonetheless, it's, it's a very positive place to be for both, I think, faculty, staff and for students. We do keep up to date on what the Agency of Education, Department of Health and the governor recommend as far as screening questions and, and information like that. Just so you know, we do, at least on a weekly basis, check in on what the, what the most current guidance is around schools operating in a hybrid, you know, schedule. And I think that's, that's all I have. I do, I, I did ask Rob to join us. He can talk a little bit about, if it's okay with you guys, talk a little bit about what services are provided to adults in our community as well as, you know, what, what entities he works with to address any, any needs in the community, particularly around students and adults with disabilities.
Before you
I, I have, I have one question before we move on, if it's okay.
Yep.
So what are you anticipating for after Christmas break? When to break? Are you anticipating to be closed? Similar to Thanksgiving?
I think right now it's kind of premature to, to look at that. I am staying in conversation with the, our sending school superintendents and principals to make sure that we're all on the same page. So I anticipate that next, probably early next week, I'll, I'll have some, some more in-depth conversations with, with those schools. So I know that's not really an answer, but it is kind of an answer.
Thank you. I, I was just hoping to have an answer sooner than later because I know parents need to plan for that. And so the earliest you can get it out for them, I think the better.
Yep. And I think Becky wanted to add, add to that.
So it, it's kind of a combination. I wanted to mention, since we were on the superintendent's report, to pass along with permission that Mike is home recovering. He had a six day hospital stay and he is home. And they anticipate a full recovery, it's just going to be some time. He hopes to be back to the center after the holiday break, that's his goal. But he is communicating with his team, we're communicating with him sometimes daily, at least definitely every other day. He's working remotely handling things that need to be done, signing documents that need his signature. And certainly the plan for after the holiday break, we are in communication with him as well. And as Meg said, with the team of southwestern superintendents who meet weekly or twice a week and to try to make that decision united with all the schools down in this area. So we hope, you know, our goal would be if a decision is made to move remote after the holidays, we obviously recognize the need to do that as soon as we can. And we'll do our best in planning so that students, parents, teachers all know before they leave on holiday break what to expect. And so they bring whatever materials they need home with them as well. So we certainly will try, Jackie, to do our best to make sure that that's done. And again, we are also communicating with Mike, trying not to overload him, but still in touch with him. And he is working remotely and answering questions as needed as well. So that's the piece I just wanted to share. Thank you.
Meg, Meg, I just, I, you weren't on when I was talking to Rebecca before, but I just want you, when you have a faculty meeting, to really thank the faculty, the staff, the support staff, everybody for all the hard work they've been doing. And tell them it's a thank you from the complete school board. We really appreciate all the work they're doing.
I will, I will definitely relay that. Thank you.
Maggie, just one other thing, is it possible that you could put together some material for the next meeting that would answer Asher's question with regard to programs where people with disabilities?
Yes. I, I do also still have Rob on the line. I don't know if you want
I just wanted to get that to you before we switch to Rob.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Want me to answer that question now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So really there are, depending on what you're looking for, there are really three main options. Any of our adult technical education programs here would offer whatever accommodations a student may need or be entitled to with appropriate documentation. We would review that in terms of what your needs are and what the program has to offer to accommodate you in any of our programs. If you are in need of academic assistance based on a disability, I would refer you to the tutorial center. They have the services there for that type of thing. And if you're looking for assistance, looking for a job or obtaining training or anything like that, that would be through vocational rehabilitation slash creative workforce solutions through the Department of Labor. So it really depends on what you're looking for, but there are, there are different options within our community for that.
Thanks, Rob.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Asher for sticking with us. It's a, it's not very interesting for a regular citizen, but thank you for staying with us. Appreciate your interest.
Are there any other matters to bring before the board?
I'll move to Jern.
Back in it.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody have a nice Christmas. Everybody have a nice
Yeah, everybody.
Have a good, have good holidays.